Good evening to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 2nd, 2016. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clint?
Here.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Demmer?
Here.
Councilmember Geisler?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda this evening.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells to adopt the agenda. Any changes or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. We don't have any proclamations or presentations. So the first, the next item is to approve the minutes for the January 19th meeting. Councilman Manning.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson to approve the city council meeting minutes from January 19th, 2016. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those are approved. Brings us to our consent agenda. We have just two items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is accepting a donation of real property. And at this time, we are looking at accepting the donation of 10 parcels, which sort of just cleans up a lot of different shamrock properties. So we're looking at adopting Resolution 16-27, accepting the donation of real property and accepting warranty deeds. And the second and final item on the consent agenda is to approve the final payment for Project 14-3, Street Reconstruction. Final payment to North Valley Incorporated for the amount of $32,159.59. And all of the amounts are reasonable and accurate according to the project file. No liquidated damages are recommended. Staff recommends approval of change order and final payment to North Valley in the amount of $32,159.59 for Project 14-3, Street Reconstruction.
Got it.
Councilman Manning.
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Demmer. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. All right. Our next item on the agenda, for maybe our last time, adoption of ordinance 2156, amending Chapter 10-600 for the Crooked Lake No-Wake Regulations. Hopefully, this is now the language that the DNR wants and we can just move on with it. We do have to have a public hearing though, so in the matter of the no-wake zone on Crooked Lake, I will open the public hearing. Is anybody here to address counsel on the no-wake zone? Anybody here for that? Hi Jim. No, you're just interested? All right, well with that, we'll close the public hearing. And limit comments to counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to recommend, to approve the ordinance 2156, amending Chapter 10-600, no-wake regulations for Crooked Lake.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Probably a little late, but as a clarification, we're not actually passing a no-wake ever zone. It's just been in front of us so many times, I sort of blew past it, where it's only if the lake levels come up, they can call the no-wake zone. All right. Item number five is to consider adoption of ordinance 2157 regarding brew pubs, breweries, taprooms, distilleries, and cocktail rooms. And recently, a microbrewery expressed an interest in opening up a brewery and taproom in the city. At this time, that type of facility is not specifically allowed in any zoning district. Currently, any size brewery would be allowed in the industrial district as light industry, and a microbrewery would be allowed in the port district as limited production and processing. 2011, the state legislator passed the Surly Bill, and so we are looking at basically opening up Coon Rapids to be friendly for a microbrewer, a taproom.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Geisler.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 2157 establishing regulations where brew pubs, breweries, taprooms, distilleries, and cocktail rooms can locate and establish definitions of common terms. And add to the motion that when we publish, that we publish a summary of the ordinance versus the full ordinance, so it's easier for people to read.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Discussion? Celebratory comments?
I think it's a great thing. I think it'll be a good thing for the city.
Yeah, I think it's very exciting. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Mr. Harlecker, do we have any kind of an update? We had somebody interested in possibly opening one, or Mr. Fernealius, do we have any update on that?
Mr. Mayor, we have been in conversation with the group, I believe their name is Alloy Brewing. It sounds like there were issues with the lease in the building that they were looking at along Coon Rapids Boulevard. We have reached out to them and we're trying to assist in finding other locations. I think they've got another location they're looking at. They didn't tell us where that is, but we're working with them to try and accommodate their plans. So that's what we know about that particular user.
Good, good. Exciting. Thank you. Item six is to consider adoption of an ordinance regarding a plumbing code. The Minnesota State Plumbing Board has adopted a new edition of the Minnesota Plumbing Code, which went into effect January 23rd, 2016. So the city must revise Chapter 12, Section 12-202, Sub-21, in order to be current with the new law. This was introduced at the last meeting, so tonight, we're actually looking at adopting those rules. Councilor Demmer.
I move to adopt the new rules governing Minnesota Plumbing Code by revising Chapter 12, Section 12-202, Sub-21 of the city code.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Manning. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Item seven. Why don't I have that? Come on. Okay, let's go here. To consider planning commission case 16-4, consider resolution 16-25, approving a registered land survey, 12856, Crooked Lake Boulevard, Rachel Nieman. That's why it wasn't working. Now it's working. So this is the one where we looked at, we actually approved the lot split a while back, and then they found it to be Torrance title, so it had to come back through us again or something. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else change on it, or is it the same lot split?
Mayor, it has not.
Okay. Councilman Manning.
I move adoption of planning case 16-4, the three stated conditions.
Second.
Motion by Manning and a second by Clint. Any discussion on that? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight is to consider preliminary plat 11301 Dogwood Street, which is the Northdale Middle School and Eisenhower Elementary School property, Anderson Johnson Associates. And who would like to give us the highlights on that? Anybody? I wasn't sure if you were pointing to Scott Harlecker or Mike. Mr. Harlecker.
Mayor and counsel, what the application is for? It's a preliminary plat to replat the property that includes Northdale Middle School, Eisenhower Elementary School, three of the city's wellhouses, and a new lot for the recently approved vehicle maintenance facility for the school district. Along with the proposed plat, the app can is requesting variances for lot depth, for three lots, and lot frontage for one lot. Those variances are required for the new lots that will encompass the three of the city wellhouses. Property in question is 79 acres. We're looking at six lots and two outlots. One outlot on the north end of the property, up on Dogwood near University, that's 10.7 acres, and that will be reserved for some type of future development. On the other outlot, which is 5.8 acres, is for a stormwater pond. Planning Commission reviewed the plat at their meeting last month. No one spoke at the public hearing, and Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the plat.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, what would you like to do?
Uh, your honor.
Councilman Manning.
I take these separately, I assume. So I would move adoption of planning case 1535, recommending approval of the preliminary plat with the following, with the three conditions that are stated.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Wells. Discussion?
None.
Councilor Clint?
I'm just wondering, was the land not platted when the schools went in?
Councilmember Clint, I don't believe it was. And one of the issues they're trying to clear up with us is some of the school district is on city property and some of the city uses are on school district property. And what this does, it will clean up those inconsistencies.
Okay, and then, planning case...
I think we should probably vote on that, right?
Oh, we didn't vote on it?
I don't think so, did we? Any other discussion?
Yeah, soul picky.
Councilor Demmer?
So, when I saw that it was like, I don't know which of the ones to ask this on, but when I saw that it was machinery use, they're gonna do some sort of repair on vehicles or whatever there, it looked like it was right in a neighborhood, right across from a neighborhood. Is it something where the noise level's gonna be acceptable to the neighborhood and we wouldn't necessarily let a business go in there and do auto repair right there? So I just wanted to make sure that you feel comfortable that we're not gonna make a hassle to the neighborhood.
Councilmember Demmer, what that is, it's a vehicle maintenance facility for the school district. What they're doing is they're taking their facility that they currently have over on 113th and moving it up there. It'll be primarily for storage of their maintenance equipment that they use to plow driveways in the school district and things like that. There will be some internal work done on the vehicles, maybe some oil changes, that sort of stuff, light, very light maintenance. And that'll be all done inside the building. It's primarily, will be used for storage of equipment and staging when they go out in the morning. There was a public hearing when the, at the planning commission meeting, and no one from the neighborhood came to that public hearing.
Okay.
And we still haven't voted on it.
We still have not voted yet, but let's just make sure we're done with our discussion first. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Councilor Clint?
I always question when you say notices were sent out, was, were they 350 feet from what point? I mean, was every house, like, within a couple of blocks from that spot where the maintenance vehicles are gonna be notified?
Correct.
Okay.
At some point through this, I thought I remember hearing a discussion where the neighbors questioned about the maintenance or the noise from the garage, and I thought they were satisfied, but I don't remember when that was. So it's a planning commission?
Yep. One of the residents who lived, not across the street, but on a cul-de-sac on the other side of Dogwood came, and she asked about noise and lights, and when it was explained to her what the activity was, type of vehicles that would be used. They're primarily small pickups and small dump trucks. She was satisfied and was happy with the answer.
Thank you. I remember she was satisfied, but I wasn't sure what the... Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Councilman Manning, did you wanna move on now?
All right. Let's see, what was I gonna say? Actually, I'm also, I'll move adoption of planning case 15-35, approving the variance to minimum lot depth and lot frontage based on the following, the six stated conditions.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Geisler. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And item nine is, we're looking at considering an introduction of an ordinance revising the allowed exterior building materials. I'm speaking really slowly, waiting for the page to load. It's all fuzzed out. So this is just an introduction this evening. Mr. Harlecker, is there anything you want to mention with this, or who would...
Yeah. But this, Mayor and counsel, this came about as a result of discussions regarding the Sand Creek and the council's concern to ask staff to look at possible changes to the exterior materials list. In doing some research, we found that our, actually, our list of acceptable materials isn't a whole lot different than most of the other communities in the metro area. One of the things we did do is we added a percentage requirement, or proposing to include a percentage requirement that would require a mix of building materials, primarily for the facades that are visible from public streets and residential districts. We developed a better definition for architectural metal panels with the help of a local architect. We were able to incorporate some of the industry's terms in distinguishing between what we probably all consider architectural metal and the typical machine shed type metal material. We did include language that would require that building materials and color be mixed and distributed throughout the building. The existing code, it just references materials. There was a concern about just having a monotonous color on the building, so that was included to address that issue. And with respect to park shelters, we did look at that, and we found that since park structures are often smaller, and they're often are, we try to blend in and enhance the actual park experience, and more natural materials might be reasonable for use on those type of buildings. And we're proposing to exclude park structures from the exterior materials requirements.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor.
Councilman Manning?
I was just gonna say that basically, seven or eight years ago, when we talked about the IFRS, I think the main reason for wanting to cut back on that was the looks. There's too many developers that were going to, majority of the building being, the exterior being IFRS. And as long as there's a good mixture of, you know, it looks nice, you know, there's no reason to not allow that material, but it's just wanted to look nice, look classy like other cities. I remember at that time, we had, one of the franchises were building in two different places, and Coon Rapids one looked like they were getting by as cheap as possible, and the other city, they were really making it look nice. And that's basically what we want to get away from is, you know, we want as nice, classy a building as other cities would be putting in. So as long as that is followed, it's a good ordinance.
Councilor Clint?
I have a question about exempting the park structures. Is there any kind of rules that they have to follow? I mean, I'm just afraid if somebody comes up with something really strange, we can't say no, if they're just exempt from anything specific.
Well, we could include language that... I was thinking of city park structures.
Yeah.
On public parks, so it would be up to the city to approve the design of those buildings and the materials that...
But would we have a right to say no for no reason, since there is no, nothing that says what they have to have?
On a city building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that would be our decision as to what materials we'd be using, right, Mr. Mayor?
That's what I would say. I think part of that would be a conversation leading up to what that building is gonna look like, and if we present something that you don't like, you always have the right to say, "We don't want that in our parks."
But right now, we have the right to say that. I mean, I'm just thinking of the Sand Creek one that we just did. We said, you know, certain things didn't fit, certain things didn't, they weren't legal in our code, and that was our basis, one of our bases for saying no. If there is no structure for anything that we can say no to, couldn't they come back to us and say, "Well, wait a minute. This meets what you have presented."
I think with that one, we were really looking at it, because it was silent in our code, we're applying the institutional, or the commercial?
Institutional.
Institutional design standards to that. Now, we're not talking about a multi-story building, you know, hundreds of thousands of square feet. We're talking about a smaller building. So again, I see, there's not gonna be a design of a park building in a city park without your involvement on what we want and what we don't want.
I understand that. I just want the legal part of it to be there, that we can say no, and it can't be held against us because we don't have any standards by which they go by.
Mayor and Councilmember Clint, I think, and other council members, I think though, what, it's sort of at our discretion if it's our building, and so, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but there isn't a standard that we have to meet. What we're suggesting is that council would be able to decide whether to, I mean, you could decide to hold it to a higher standard, or you could say, "Well, this is fitting within the park itself, maybe doesn't meet the percent mixes that are being proposed here." So we're not holding it to the standard as written in this ordinance.
But there is no standard. That's the point.
Right. It would be at council discretion to decide if the materials are satisfactory or not.
Hey.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Geisler?
So I guess the way I'm looking at it is, you know, we have to trust, and we work with our city staff, and our opinions come into the mix, but at the end, there's funding that has to be approved to pay for this. And if we don't like the design and it doesn't meet the standards that we have conveyed to staff, we would have the ability to not approve the funding. And so there are ways that we can ensure, but I guess, I don't know if we necessarily need to restrict or eliminate park structures from the ordinance. I would think we could certainly come close to meeting the standards.
I'm just, and I'm not saying that they shouldn't be held as strict as something else. I'm just really hesitant to not have any kind of structure. And I don't know if the wording can be such that it states that council has that ability just to cover us.
Didn't we start this process because the materials that we wanted to build the Sand Creek building out of didn't meet our code? So we thought we should expand the code to include what we were considering there. So I guess I'm really having a hard time tracking on this, 'cause I think that all we're doing is expanding the authorized or the allowed exterior materials. I guess I'm not sure where the challenge is.
Mr... Oh, I'm sorry. You're exactly right. That is why we decided to have the ordinance expanded.
Mr. Mayor?
That's the reason.
Councilor Geisler?
My recollection of this, and I'm only repeating this only because there are people watching and they don't have the benefit of being at the workshops that a lot of us were at, is that there was at one point in time a proposal to construct the new building at Sand Creek, and one of the options in the proposal that we were reviewing at the time was to use an IFRS kind of synthetic stucco kind of compound. But the discussion we had at the workshop was, "Well, that's not one of the permitted exterior structures or sidings that we allow for the general public to use in constructing residential housing and the like, and so perhaps we should look at other materials." But in that process, we got frankly, a better look at some of the IFRS stucco and synthetic stucco. And we set about, and I think staff has done what we asked, exploring whether we should expand that to give more options to the public. We ultimately, I think, went in a different direction with the building, but nevertheless, staff has come back and recommended that we expand it so that we can, so that people in the city can have more options available when they're building a building. We always, as a council, have the ability together to exercise our discretion on what materials we want to use or don't want to use for a park building, and I think there would be a similar discussion as to the one we had. If we went outside of this, we would just now actually have more support for being able to use the possibility of an IFRS or synthetic stucco for a future building down the road. But I think, you know, if we decided to build a building out of hay or sticks, we could all decide that that just isn't in keeping with what we want in the park, and we could exercise our discretion as a council and shoot it down. So I don't see anything with the new ordinance that limits us in the future, but I do see something in the ordinance that gives more options to our citizens as they're going forward. And, you know, I disclosed to the council at the time that even though I didn't directly represent IFRS, it was a client of my old law firm over a decade ago, and I had some familiarity with the product and living in the South for a period of time, saw many frankly, rather attractive buildings built using the IFRS synthetic stucco. Part of the challenge with it is not so much the quality of the product, but its installation, because there had been an issue with it nationally, which I think has been resolved now, about people sealing up houses so tight that water couldn't escape from behind that form of a stucco, and then there were mold issues and things like that, or accusations of it. I'm pretty satisfied that we're beyond that, and I intend to vote in favor of this. Again, disclosing, I have no interest and never had any interest in IFRS stucco, but I do want to give the citizens of Coon Rapids more options. Thank you.
Councilor Demmer?
On a totally different track. I just wanted a clarification in case anyone at home decides to read this. Residential building materials is in here, and we list what residential building materials are allowed. I'm assuming that's for commercial residential, multifamily apartments?
Correct.
And it has no impact on your ability to build your house out of vinyl siding?
Councilmember Demmer, absolutely nothing.
Okay. Because I didn't see vinyl siding listed, so I worried someone would freak out.
Right.
All right, thank you.
It's back to that institutional construction, wasn't that your word?
Yeah, the only thing was it in that section, they've changed it. So it used to say residential, institutional, commercial, and now they split institutional, commercial into one section, and residential into its own.
Right.
And it doesn't actually say multifamily, commercial, residential, it just says residential.
Residential buildings, yeah. Okay.
I don't know if that has to be clarified, or if it's implied by the section of code that it's in. Since we only have the snippet, I didn't see what the larger code was.
We can look into that. All right. Well, with no further ado then, we will consider, in the case of planning case 16-3, we will consider the... uh, we will consider the, uh, ordinance for acceptable materials for multifamily institutional, commercial and industrial buildings introduced. And item, uh, number eleven, no, ten, sorry. Consider resolution sixteen dash twenty-six authorizing the sale of tax forfeited properties. And we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, what, like, three, six, seven, seven or eight properties here? Okay, and then, so we've got, we've got two that are sell the property to the highest bidder. And then the rest are, uh, one, two, three, four are sell the property to the abutting landowner. And then the last one is convey the property to the city of Coon Rapids. Okay, thank you. I missed that. I'd skipped right over and I'm looking at it, I'm going, why would we sell that sliver of land? It didn't make any sense to me, but now I'm totally okay with it.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gaisler?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution six dash sixteen dash twenty-six authorizing the sale of tax forfeited properties in the manner stated with the seven properties.
Second. Motion by Gaisler, second by Wells. Any discussion?
Just one question.
Counselor Manning?
Would the, the ones abutting the property, that the, the owners of the J C property all said they were going to purchase it? Are you, this is assuming they might or? There's four of them that are, are abutting somebody else's property. Says you're gonna sell it to those people, they all agreed to buy it, is what I see.
At this point, they have not, they will offer it to them.
Okay, so if they don't want it, then what?
I believe it goes to the state, I'm not sure on that.
At least a couple of them abut two different properties, so I suppose if one doesn't want another, they can.
We're gonna force you to buy them.
All right. We had a motion and a second on this. Any other discussion? Mr. Brody, do you want me to read all these out? Okay, I'd be happy to if you want me to.
I think she stated them as stated, one through seven.
All right, very good.
Not a motion.
With no further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Now, item eleven is to consider, uh, documents for Anoka County right of way acquisition, one, one, three, one, three, Foley Boulevard. And this is that little, uh, piece right by the water tower, right? Yeah, so this is, they, they just need that little piece for doing that Foley Boulevard reconstruction, I would imagine there. We are considering deeds for portions of city-owned property at one, one, three, one, three, Foley Boulevard, the water tower site related to an Anoka County road construction project.
Council?
Your Honor.
Counselor Manning?
I moved that the, uh, we approved the quitclaim and warranty deeds for the properties, uh, one thirteen, thirteen Foley Boulevard Northwest and authorized the mayor and city manager to execute the deeds.
Second.
Motion by Manning and a second by Gaisler. And I'm just gonna clarify, it's for portions of the property at one thirteen, thirteen Foley Boulevard. Any discussion? Counselor Clint?
I'm just wondering if we're keeping track of and following the county's process with businesses and residents of this new project? In terms of, they still haven't come to any agreements with a lot of them? Do we know where they're at with that?
Councilmember Clint, members of the council. At last check, which was maybe about a month ago, I had heard that there were about eighty parcels or portions of parcels they needed to acquire. They were up to about fifty-six, somewhere in the mid-fifties. There were others that they were continuing to negotiate with. I, I think there were some, uh, discussions occurring still at that time. Uh, and, and some of that goes through the condemnation proceedings and they don't really start assigning value on some of those until after the project were to occur in some instances. So I, I know there, on a majority of the parcels they have acquired and they continue to negotiate as they, uh, enter into the condemnation phase. But in, in reality, i- in their opinion, as, um, acquisition agents, they are well ahead of schedule than what they are on other similar types of projects. And some of them just don't happen to settle until after the fact and sometimes even years after the project is complete because that's when they really determine what that damage would be to that property.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Johnson?
Just so that I'm clear on this, as I understand it, what we're proposing to do here is to convey properties that are owned in fee right now by the city of Coon Rapids to Anoka County so that they can complete the road project. We're not talking about impacting any private property at this point in time. Is that accurate?
Yes. This specific case, Councilmember Johnson, that is the case, yes.
That was, that was my reading of it too and, and thank you for, um, that clarification. The only question I had related to it is why aren't we, is there a, a reason we're surrendering all title to it? Why not, why aren't we just agreeing to a temporary construction easement in the area?
Councilmember Johnson, members of the council, there's actually two deeds here. One is a temporary construction easement and one is in fee. And that is because it's going to be contained in there right of way. So they will now own that as right of way. A sliver of it will be used for construction and then it will come back to the city.
And so on the other one, we're gonna, we're gonna essentially get it back, if you will. I mean, we're, we're gonna keep the fee under it, but they're gonna have a temporary easement to, to whatever work they need to do.
Under the construction easement portion, yes, that's accurate.
Very good, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Item number twelve is to consider a rental license denial appeal for sixteen, ten, sixteen, twenty, one hundred and seventh Avenue. Mr. Grand, do you wanna lay this out for us or?
Sure.
Want me to read all of your, uh, discussion here?
Um, well, just to summarize what's in front of you. The assessing department did make us aware that this property had been sold back in April. So one of our inspectors did make contact, um, with the, the property itself, so the, the tenants that are living there in July of 2015 and did verify that both of the units were being used as rental property. Being that it was a new owner, we did not have a, a current rental license for the property, which is required in the city. So we did, um, make contact with the new property owner to explain the requirements and the rental licensing ordinance. And there was, you know, contact made, like I said, in July. We did not hear back, um, as of September, so an administrative citation was sent out. But the address that had been provided to us, um, apparently was not a current address, so the, the citation was returned. Anoka County records did show the owner's address as the property address itself on one hundred and seventh, but the owner was not living at that property. So essentially, the owner did not receive the citation, so the citation fee was never charged. Ultimately, when, um, in December, we still had not heard from the property owner, had not received an application for the rental license. So we did post the property as an un, or as, um, an unlicensed rental and then did get updated information from the tenants as to a mailing address and contact information for the property owner. So the posting and the letter that went with the posting was also sent to, um, his home address in Zimmerman. And at that time, um, about two weeks later, on December thirty-first, he did come in to submit his rental application. At that time, he did have some questions about the background check form. His questions were answered by staff and, uh, so he did submit his application. The background check did, um, get forwarded to the police department as they are the ones who do perform that background check. And, um, it was found that there were convictions in his criminal history that were not disclosed on his application. So we did deny the rental license based on omitting that information. That is a condition from the rental licensing ordinance that, um, as a reason or a, or as a reason for denial. So we did send the letter out in January denying his application. And at this time, he is appealing that decision.
And the process here is, we, of course, will, um, allow, allow him to talk to us and we'll discuss this. At the end, if we were to uphold the denial, what would be the process? Because there's tenants living there, obviously, and this is, is probably an income property. What's, what would happen then? I guess I'm just curious.
Dave, I don't know if you wanna take this or?
Go ahead. We, we did discuss this, um, Your Honor and fellow council members. And I think staff would allow some period of time for those tenants to, to find alternative housing. We wouldn't be out there tomorrow or anything like that. Give them an opportunity. I don't know if, if Kristin or her department has any specifics or based on past history, that kinda timeframe, sixty days, something along that lines, to provide, uh, the opportunity for the tenants to move out and, uh, for sort of business to wrap up there.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Grand before we invite Mr. Sutherland to testify?
Your Honor. Counselor Manning or Wells?
Curious, I, I understand that the reason for not getting a rental license was fair, failure to disclose. But wouldn't the convictions also be a reason to deny in themselves?
Um, the convictions that Mr. Sutherland has does not fall under the Koskinen law. They're all misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. So the convictions themselves do not qualify under Koskinen.
Mr. Johnson?
What, just so that I'm clear on it, what steps has he taken right now along the application process? He's paid the kind of fee and he's submitted an application which you all found to be deficient in some regards. Has, there's a class that goes along with this as well, has he done that yet?
He had registered for the March class.
Okay. And when is, when in March is the class?
The third, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Sutherland, you wanna address the council here? Yep, right over here to the mic, sir.
Come and make my appeal for my rental license. I didn't find out I needed a rental license until after the purchase of the duplex in April. I read through the rental application last summer and saw that it asked for a background check. This worried me, to be honest, and I avoided it because of that. I was worried about the convictions themselves. My renters got the notice in December and I knew I would have to deal with it. And I went to City Hall and filled out the application. Where it asked for a criminal background, I circled gross misdemeanor, thinking that they were asking possibly for the highest level of offense, not necessarily every offense. I did not omit anything to hide it. I knew a background check would be done, which would reveal everything. If I had wanted to hide something, I probably would have circled the lesser offense, not the greater. The gro, the gross misdemeanor and misdemeanor happened at the same time. My treatment centered around the gross misdemeanor, so that's why it stands out more to me. As far as another misdemeanor I had thirteen years ago, I did not even know it was a misdemeanor. I thought the charges were dropped because I only had, had to attend a class for it. In the last two weeks, I had the records office send me a disposition on that misdemeanor, uh, on that issue. And it ended up, well, the disposition, disposition did not say misdemeanor on it. And I sent that disposition to Kristin or to the rental office. I apologize again for neglecting my responsibility in securing a rental license and also for my oversight and reporting my background correctly. Any questions?
Questions of Mr. Sutherland?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Johnson?
Hey, Mr. Sutherland, I've got a few questions for you because I think it's important to, to understand a little bit of what you've, uh, done following these convictions, right? I've taken a look at the public records that are available on this and, and back in, in, uh, two thousand and, I wanna say it was two thousand and two or four, it was a misdemeanor domestic assault, right? And as I understand it, with that, you, you got a stayed sentence and did not actually serve any jail time.
Right.
Fair to say?
Right.
And you were ordered to go to some anger management training, which you did.
Yep.
Never had a bench warrant issued, never failed to ma, make an appearance.
No, no.
Pled guilty and accepted responsibility.
Yes.
Over approximately, well, approximately about a decade later, you ran into trouble with the law again. And made all your court appearances.
Right.
And you were represented by counsel and attorney. Was that Walt Kaminsky?
No.
Is it a different attorney?
Yep.
Okay. And in that process, you again, accepted responsibility, right?
Right.
Pled guilty to both of the offenses in front of you?
Yep.
Okay. Were ordered to two years of probation?
Yes.
Didn't serve any jail time?
Couple of weekends.
Couple of weekends, so you got a couple of weekends?
Ten days.
Did the, um, treatment that was ordered, right?
Four hundred hours worth of treatment, yeah.
Never, um, if I understand it right, um, never once violated the terms and conditions of your probation on either that matter or the earlier matter?
Right.
Never violated on your probation?
Never, no.
Okay. And so those matters, you know, in, in kinda the language that we use from time to time, you've kind of, um, in, with respect to what the court asked you to do, you've, you've paid that debt to society, right?
Right.
Okay. And you've been discharged successfully from probation on both of those matters? Could you tell me, um, just a little bit about the tenants that are there in your, in your building? Do you have a duplex or a single unit?
A duplex. They're great tenants. Uh, one couple has a two-year lease. They were already there when I bought the, the rental property and they're great, um, super people. And the other couple's a young couple and Joe is the, the guy that lives there. He even texted me and said, if there's anything we can do to help you show up at any meetings, I have the text on my phone, I can show it. You know, anything, I mean, he was supportive. My, uh, relationship with my renters is professional. It's all, it's all good. I made mistakes five years ago and it scared me when I saw the rental, uh, application because I have, I was laid off in, in May, sorry, I'm nervous. I was laid off in May as well and I was filling out applications and sometimes when they see, uh, misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor, you get rejected from, you know, employment sometimes, so it scared me or worried me.
Are, are you willing to provide, um, things like your, you know, your, a copy of your rental agreement to the city of Coon Rapids, which is required under the statute? And otherwise comply with?
Oh, yeah.
The rental license law and, and ordinance that we have here in Coon Rapids?
Definitely, yes.
I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Mr. Grand, is it fair to say that if, if, if he would have disclosed each of the things, they, they didn't meet the top four for the Koskinen, would we have issued the rental license or, Mr. Brody?
Your Honor, I think given the, what the staff felt was the seriousness of the charges, there's a sort of a catch-all under, under all of that particular code in the rental license that says other good cause is determined by the city council after conducting a public hearing. It's our belief that we would have brought that here to let the council make that decision. I think there's other, like I said, things that we would have looked at then. I think there's other, like I said, things that we would have looked at then. We thought that this was the right way to go. It's what he did. He failed to disclose on his rental license and so we brought the matter, so we denied it and he appealed it and brought the matter to the council. So that would have been the staff's position had he disclosed those.
Thank you. Other questions? Justice Demmer?
Can you read that just one more time?
Sure.
If you had assumed it was an error of omission and not, you know, and said, we're going to go through and, and go to council, what, what criteria would we have had to make a decision based on? What does that section say?
The section says, and like I said, I called sort of a, is it other good cause? So there's this laundry list of things that a person can be denied a rental license for. One of them is misrepresentation, which is the one that we denied him under currently. If he, sort of the other, the last one here that would have applied is other good cause is determined by the city council after conducting a public hearing.
Can you, do you have any examples in history where things have been brought here based on other good cause and what sort of things have?
None, to be honest. We've had the rental license, I think, since two thousand nine.
Nine.
And we've denied the license for prior convictions. I think we've denied the license based on the, the particular section we're at tonight, but never for that particular.
And is anyone here when, who was there when that was written, has any idea what was mine when it was written?
Sorry, Denise is raising her hand.
No, go ahead. I was not, I mean, I was here with the city, but I was not the city attorney, so I would.
No, I mean, you want the legality of it, ask him.
I presume it was intended for examples that wouldn't necessarily fit in here, that you thought were good cause, that you thought was a good reason not to have a license.
I was just curious if we knew of what, I don't know what good cause means necessarily. And so if someone had something in mind when they wrote that, what, what sort of things it was trying to capture?
And that I wasn't, like I said, I think they probably put that in with the thought, well, what if there was something that wasn't on this list? We didn't want to make sure that, we limited ourselves, if there was some unusual circumstance, something that, that council should take a look at, that provision was provided.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Demmer, if I, if I might just draw your recollection back about a year ago, we were considering a license, it was a liquor license at the time, and a manager license, and, and we had a gentleman who was in front of us who had had some run-ins with the law. And one of the, and that was later withdrawn, so, and we never really ended up taking action on it. But one of the conversations that we had about, and I think it surrounded good cause, was the issue of the person still being on probation and not being fully complete with the probationary disposition. And that's different and separate and apart from this. And I think what, what Mr. Brody was talking about is that just, could, could this council consider just the nature of the charge and our knowledge of kind of the nature of the charge? And let's just be honest about it here, because it's part of the public record. We're talking about a misdemeanor count of indecent exposure and we're talking about a gross misdemeanor count of what's called criminal sexual conduct in the fifth degree, which is a gross misdemeanor. Just so that the public is aware, that is not a charge that it, that subjects somebody to being registered as a predatory offender, so it's significantly less severe than other forms of criminal sexual conduct in higher degrees. And could we consider that as being good cause? And I, I will wait for the discussion period to talk about that a little bit.
Your Honor.
Counselor Clint.
When we came about making the rental license, you know, I, I think that one of our main concerns at the beginning was that a lot of the properties that we were having problems with at the time, would go back and we'd find out owners were, you know, having a lot of problems with the law. And so one way to, to check that would be to, you know, do the background check.
I'm sorry. I just sort of want to reiterate, though, I mean, I think that we're really not considering whether or not this is sort of good cause based on the convictions. What we're really presenting to council is whether or not the fact that these convictions were omitted from the application is in itself justified to deny him this rental license. So that, there is sort of a distinction there. But yeah, just to keep in mind, though, had he maybe put those things on the application, we still may be having a similar dialogue, but under sort of a different pretext. What else was concerning, I think, to staff as we went through this process was sort of at the end, obviously there were things omitted from the application, or at least that's what we believe. I think what led up to that, though, was also concerning from an application standpoint. One, that sort of a failure to know about the ordinance itself, which maybe you can understand, but that when notified, there was quite a lengthy period before any action was taken. And then when we get to sort of this third strike, that when the application was filled out, there was omissions. And so I think all those things together rose us in our eyes as a concerning situation that, that's why we're here tonight.
And I understand that, and I, but I, I'm actually personally satisfied with, with Mr. Sutherland's excuse for the omission and for the delay, but it's the matter of the other causes yet, if, you know, so, it's just me. Counselor Clint?
I just have a question, Mr. Sutherland. Do you own other properties?
I do. One in Zimmerman.
Okay.
Your, your residence, or another one that you rent out?
No, I rent out.
Okay.
Was that where we were first sending the notices to, maybe, and that was the wrong address?
It's possible. Maybe that's where, yeah, that's possible.
Your Honor.
Counselor Manning.
If we, if this were to be not upheld, would he automatically then get the license for these rentals, or would this come back again based on the other things? Because I feel the same way. I've looked through this and it doesn't, there's a certain line I can, you know, see crossing in terms of okay and something, but I would not be able to do it based on what I've read.
Counselor Clint.
I think, tell me if I'm wrong, with that he has started the process? I mean, he's in the middle of the process?
He, he did the application, but it was returned to him, it was rejected.
I get, I'm just following up on what, if we didn't uphold the denial, would he be at that process of still just having to take the class?
He'd have to continue through the process and get his rental license, whatever requirements that he still had left, take the class, whatever else is required.
Do you know what's left for the process, Kristen? Just the class?
Well, Counselor Clint, I believe the refund has been, check has been, or sent out to you. Have you received that? Okay. So the fees would have to be paid, he would have to take the class, there would have to be a rental property inspection of the, of the property itself, of both units. And then assuming that the conditions at the, the property itself are of, you know, that the inspection passes, then the inspection, or then the license would be issued.
Follow-up, can you remind us, is it a yearly then inspection? Or is it every couple of years? Once they got the license?
The inspection is based typically on the condition of the property, or if there were things that were cited, it determines how frequently we're back out to the property to do a reinspection. The license itself is an annual license that needs to be renewed, but the inspections for a single-family home or a duplex typically would be anywhere from two to four years, depending on the condition, or two to three years normally, but.
And do they have to pay an additional amount for that inspection at that time?
Whenever an inspection is needed, there is an inspection fee that's charged.
I guess, I don't know if, maybe I didn't make myself clear. I guess what I'm wondering is if we were to overturn this, would then the staff then not bring this back and, and award the, the license to him? Is it likely to, to come back to us based on some, the, the offenses if we don't uphold this? Or are you just then going to go through the process and give him the rental license?
Oh, I see. Yeah, I, I would, I would suggest this is the public hearing. If we're gonna, if we're not going to, if, if we're going to overturn the denial, I, I can't see us coming through another public hearing process.
I guess.
Just to follow up on that, though, if we are, it's, it's kind of a catch-22. We've all, you know, that we don't want to uphold this based on the omission, but we do want to, we don't want to give the license based on the other things. You see what I mean?
I think we should do that right now, then. If that's, if that's.
But can we?
Well, no.
I mean, can we consider that?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, I, I actually have a thought that I'd like to share with, with the council as to how we might proceed, but it obviously depends on whether people are in agreement with me. First of all, just very briefly, with respect to the, the non-disclosure issue, I can entirely see an unintentional non-disclosure of a ticket for a domestic assault, you know, thirteen years ago, where no jail time was served and frankly, he pled guilty, paid the fine, did the, did the required stuff. So I, that does not trouble me and nor would we customarily, I think, deny anybody a license based on that kind of oversight and, or that kind of a conviction. With respect to the other convictions, which are more serious and they're reflected that way as a gross misdemeanor, one of the things that I think is important for the council to understand is both of those cases were sentenced on the same day. He pled guilty and was sentenced on the same day. And under Minnesota law, basically the sentences merge, so that you, even though you have a technical conviction and sentence on an underlying case, it's the gross misdemeanor that controls. And so that made sense to me as to why he would disclose the gross misdemeanor and the highest level of conviction there. So I personally am not that troubled by the non-disclosure issue under these circumstances. And I think it even speaks volumes that he's, he's come here before us and he's talking to us about it candidly, and these are not easy things to talk about. So I appreciate that. With respect to the short conversation we had about good cause, even though I don't want this to, to take up that issue, my one thought on that right now as I sit here is it would be very hard for us to find good cause when a district court has discharged him from probation and said, you're good to go back into the community and you've completed everything. And we don't even have violations of probation or any lingering ongoing concerns. And frankly, as I understand it from his appeal materials, he is voluntarily and on his own basis going through additional counseling that he didn't even have to disclose to us. So he's provided us that further assurance. And what I'm thinking is that we, if he's willing to waive a speedy resolution to this, is that we table the appeal and allow him to resubmit his application and to go through the process and to be inspected. And, and then if and when he has met all of the requirements and he's willing to go through that process and meet all the requirements, we can bring the matter back on to a council meeting and make a further and more informed decision about his willingness to go through and comply with the ordinance that we have. Because that will require even, as I understand it, and as DeGrand can, can, correct me if I'm wrong, but require him to provide a copy of his lease and require him to frankly do a background check on his tenants. And we will get more information as to whether there have been perhaps problems there that need to be further addressed before the issuance of the license. So that's kind of my thought on it.
Counselor Wells, do you still have something?
I, I have no desire to continue this on, and I would have absolutely no problem to affirm the denial. And I don't want to sit here in a public meeting and beat up Mr. Sutherland, but, you know, I, I would suggest we all read the paragraph, you know, where it talks about his crimes. And, and I think I'd like to bring out here, we're talking about somebody that was approximately forty-five years old when this happened. We're not talking about an eighteen-year-old that made mistakes. It's a forty-five-year-old man. And we pass these ordinances to have some control over what we do in the city. And just because somebody, you know, i- is already renting without going to us, I, I see no reason to give him a pass. So I have absolutely no problems denying the appeal.
Your Honor.
Mr. Brody.
I just have one point of clarification with Councilmember Johnson. He did plead guilty to two offenses on that date. Those were two separate incidences. And I don't think that one of them would have gone away. He still has a misdemeanor conviction and a gross misdemeanor.
I'm not suggesting they would have gone away. They were actually two different offense dates, about a week, a week or two apart. But the sentences would merge for the purpose of, of what he recalls and what would, I mean, he would have gotten concurrent time on the misdemeanor. So there would have been no separate consecutive sentence that would have been served.
But it wouldn't have been like a felony where he was convicted out of the, sort of the same incident, two different counts, that sort of you could only be convicted of one.
Nope.
I just wanted, all right.
It's two convictions.
All right, then you and I are clear. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gaismer?
I guess I take a differing opinion. I, I look at, yes, maybe there are some omissions. And I, I see somebody who maybe has made some mistakes and is correcting them and moving forward. And I'm one of the opinion that people need other chances and to be able to be productive members and have an income and have a chance to do something. Because if any one issue is something that you can't do anything else, it, that's not the way I think we need to be in our city. So I would vote to allow, to not affirm the denial.
So would that be something along with Counselor Johnson was suggesting to?
Well, I could potentially support that, where I don't, I think if we don't affirm the denial, that process automatically goes through. And there, if there are issues found, there are other points within the process where that license doesn't actually get completed. And so I don't know if it necessarily has, would have to come back, you know? But I, if that's what the wishes of the rest of the council are, to go forward with not affirming the denial, then I would certainly take that tack.
Yeah.
Counselor Clint?
I, I too would vote to not uphold the denial, so let him go forward and proceed. You know, we talk about this omission, but he did it, he did write down on the application his gross misdemeanor. He said what it was. And I, I can totally see the thinking behind that, that he did write that down. And I know other people in different situations have done the exact same thing. And so I understand that completely. If he had not written anything, or if he had said no, I mean, a blatant lie, then I, I think I'd have more concern about it all and I don't think I could, you know, let it go forward. But I think the fact that he did write this down, he did let us know that, you know, what this gross misdemeanor was, and the fact of coming forward now and admitting and talking about it is not easy. And I don't know which way to go as far as Mr. Johnson's way of continuing our public hearing. I don't know. I don't know that we have to do that. If that's a wish of everybody else, go with it, but.
Your Honor, Counselor Manning?
You know, I, I also agree that people need a second chance, but in a situation like this, in the situation that he would be in, being, you know, basically able to go into apartments and M keys and whatever, I, there's just a certain line that I, I just don't think I can cross. I'd rather err on the side of caution. Maybe he'll never do anything wrong again. But in this situation, considering what was done, I don't feel comfortable. But in this situation concerning what was done, I don't feel comfortable allowing a license to go out. And like I say, I'm not saying that he's ever going to do anything, but I don't want to have to give this person, that person a license and then all of a sudden something does happen. And I don't want to have to be thinking back like, you know, I wish I voted differently. There's just certain lines that I think depending on what the offense is, and it's losing a once tempers, a little bit different than what I've read on here. It is just, in my opinion, it could happen again. I don't know if it will, it could, and I don't want to take a chance. So I'm going to vote to uphold the denial.
Okay. How are we doing? I'm not seeing any yet, Mr. Sutherland. May I speak again?
Sure.
Go ahead.
You know, I had $400 hours worth of therapy and if that therapy is useless and can't reform somebody, why even have it? You know, I mean, I put a lot of work in. I've got a stack of assignments this high of hard work I did and I've lost a lot. I've been divorced. I'm using some of that income. I've, I've lost my job. I don't, I don't want to make this a, you know, your sympathy or anything, but I do rely a little bit on the income. I don't want the people to be kicked out. They're great people. It would be, I have to, I'll have to foreclose on the place. I mean, is that really a good solution? I don't, even for the city of Coon Rapids, I don't know if that's great either. The health club where these offenses occurred has allowed me to come back. And on my own, I told them I would take my kids with me just for their peace of mind because I know I'm not going to do it again, but for their peace of mind. So I want your, I'd like to gain your trust. I was thinking if there was some way I could be on a probational period so that in a year when I have to renew my license or something, if I can do a background check at that time again, as long as I'm on that probation, two years, three years, four years, I'll pay for the background check and you can examine me every year or even, even shorter period of time if you want, anytime you want. I'm open to that. I'll pay for it, but I'd lose a lot of money if I lost the property. It would go into foreclosure. I can't keep it.
Councilmember.
Question, have the renters been shown the record and the testimony and are they fully aware of?
Not every, not everything, but they know of the gross misdemeanor and misdemeanor.
Where this is hard for me is I absolutely have no belief that the omission was intentionally concealing, right? So if it's an omission, it's an omission and I'm generally, you know, you reveal the worst thing, that's the thing that's most likely to get you denied. So from the omission standpoint, I have no problem saying it was just not filling out the form right. But as much as you believe in second chances, right, the, the second chances, I take Councilor Johnson's, he has paid his dues to society, but I also take Councilor Manning's, is having a key to apartments the right place. These are, it is the hardest to be city council when you're basically being a jury. So I don't know if you're as torn as I am.
I'm extremely conflicted.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman.
I think the question we're looking at tonight is this denial was based on the omission on the application. And so with just going with that and my feeling that there wasn't a complete omission, it was just the depth of the omission, that was that. I'm ready to move forward in voting on what's in front of us, denial based on that omission. So I'm going to make a motion that we, how do you put it, deny the denial. We do not uphold the denial. If it has to be based on something, it's based on the fact that I don't believe that there was a complete omission on the application.
Just for a point of my clarification, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this property located just north of Yegret that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Because I think it's in, in my ward. I'm going to second the motion.
Do we need to clean up the motion? What would, if the, if the council's wishes are to deny the denial, what, what would that, what would that actually, what would you want it to look like?
Uphold the appeal.
Uphold the appeal. There you go. Is that your motion?
To uphold the appeal, to let and to let Mr. Sutherland continue with the process of the application, wherever that process stands right now, moving forward.
Well, so just upholding the appeal would cover that though, right?
He would be allowed to resubmit.
Yeah, he'd be allowed to resubmit then.
Okay.
So the motion is to allow the appeal, motion by Clinton. And that's, that's your second?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson. Okay, discussion. Counselor Geisler.
I have one point, just to address the comment from Councilmember Demmer. I totally understand. I had the pleasure of serving as, on a jury for a case exactly like this. And from a jury perspective, we did prove conviction, which is what happened. And, but we aren't really a jury of what happened. We're, we can't convict for future. And, and so to me, well, as hard as it is as a jury to convict someone for some, something, this is our ability to give the second chance. And it's not continually having this, this stone around somebody's neck that they can never move forward on and, and show that they can be a good person and be a good member of society and have a great rental property in our city and we have great tenants. And our rental process, once they have the license, maintains that this will continue. So that's why I support the motion.
Councilor Demmer.
A question for staff. If the renters were to change, so these renters moved out and new renters come in, what happens? Is it a new rental license or they, he's allowed to rent in new inspections, new anything? I guess what I want to know is can we be assured that a new renter will be aware of this record before they decide that they can trust that he can have a key to their apartment?
Councilmember Demmer, that is not part of our process. The rental license follows the property owner for that one property. It is, it's not triggered by new tenants moving in or out. We do require that rental property owners always do background checks on their tenants and do have a written lease, but we don't, you know, we can on request, on occasion request that information from the landlord to prove that they are using those tools, but we don't typically, you know, majority of cases, we don't get that information from landlords. So, but there is no trigger to require or to do a new license or a new inspection when a new tenant moves in.
Your Honor. Councilor Wells.
And I can count, but that doesn't mean I won't go down swinging. And I think that's exactly the point. If two young ladies move into that apartment, the people they entrust to have done their jobs is us, not, not the, you know, the, the person who owns the property. That's why we have rental licensing ordinances.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman.
I'm just going to counteract that a little bit because the fact is we only have had this ordinance since 2009, did you say? So before that, there was nothing. I mean, we had no control, so.
Not even a valid point. We have it now. We've had it for seven years.
Right, but we.
Just, I'm sorry, as a clarification, we have had rental licensing for, I believe, about 20 years. It's just that there was the really big revamping of the ordinance back in 2009.
Yeah. I guess I just thinking of places I rented, I feel like it's incumbent on the person to do their jobs too. I mean, I would never go and rent from somebody that I didn't find out about first. And granted, not everyone's going to do that, but that is an option for the renters to do.
Well, to Councilor Wells' point is we're issuing a license that said, hey, we've looked into this person and they're good to go. You can trust them. I mean, that's kind of how I feel about the license, but that's not it.
I, I don't view it that way. I mean, I, I respect Councilmember Wells' position on this and, and I might be voting significantly differently, well, no, I would be voting significantly differently if he was still in a probationary period, if he had been violated in the terms and conditions of his probation along the way. But, you know, at some point in time, at least from my perspective, you have to make a judgment based on the information that's in front of you. And what I have in front of me is a man who has expressed, I mean, he's basically allocuted with us right now. He's confessed all of this stuff and, and he's confessed the reasons that were troubling him about this and I understand them because I've seen them before in the criminal justice system. And yet he has a good track record with probation. And so I have less concerns about that going forward. And the issue before us is one of non-disclosure, not, not the issue of whether he's a good person or a bad person or what he might do or a conjecture about that. And we all understand that there are certain kinds of offenses that, that almost by their very nature suggests that a subsequent offense could happen. It's not an easy call on this. I'm also mindful, and what I hope we're going to learn through this process is, is that we have a property that is owned and not vacant. We have tenants in the property. We have somebody who is getting income off of it. Presumably we have real estate taxes that are getting paid. And I don't view a rental license as basically being an insurance policy for tenants to be able to then blame the city for not doing its job. We're actually doing our job right here and now. It's just we may make a judgment on it and if somebody down the road wants to criticize us and say, "You are wrong," and in fact, Mr. Sutherland lets us down and commits a crime, then he's got other issues and presumably he would be held accountable. Now, that's no solace for anybody who is facing that situation or who is purported to be a victim in that situation, but yet, I already kind of expressed my view that I would like to have tabled this, but I didn't see a whole lot of, I was getting the sense and didn't see a whole lot of feeling along the lines of the discussion that people wanted this to come back if he otherwise qualified and approved and was approved for the license. So that's why I seconded the motion. I'm interested to hear what other people might have to say as well.
Your Honor.
I guess I'm kind of surprised that we haven't had staff get on us at this point to remind us that it was denied based on this omission. That's what we're dealing with. If, if we approve the appeal and he goes through the process, the licensing department may still deny this and still have him come before us with the questions of, what did we call it?
Good cause.
Good cause. And that's where that discussion would come in. This is about denial based on the omission of all the facts.
I would, I have to say, I would be really disappointed if staff brought it back to us with another basis such as good cause after this council has already had this kind of a discussion about it. And, and I don't think it's out of bounds to have this discussion about it because to Councilmember Wells' point, the issue really is, is it a, is it a material non-disclosure? And why might it be a material non-disclosure? And I, I, I understand what he's saying along those lines. My, my view is, is that it was material, albeit perhaps not intentional and not fatal to the process in my view, under all the circumstances.
Your Honor, I, I agree with you. I guess I, the point I'm getting at is some, some council members have talked about the future and I don't think that that's what.
You're, you're drilling this down to the findings to consider for this denial.
That's why 15 minutes ago, I asked that exact clarification. So now we're talking about it. But if it's not going to come back here, I still have a right to vote based on the omission, which, and I'm going to look at the overall situation regardless of whether one person likes it or not. So I think we've discussed this enough. Why would somebody make a motion?
I do.
Well, no, we've got a motion.
All right.
And we have a second.
We've been talking about it so long.
We're actually in the discussion period. All right, so we have a motion and a second to. To uphold the appeal. Thank you. Yes, Councilor Demmer.
So to the last question about would future renters see anything? One thing I would like to see, especially if we're going to ever run into this sort of case again, and if it did get upheld, is I'd like to see that when we do a background check and when we approve the lease, that whatever the results of the background check are somehow presented to the renters, if that's possible or legal. So any future, you know, whatever the lease agreement is that we're allowed to approve, I don't know if there's any way to make the background check something people can see. Because I would have much less problem approving this if this was something that every renter going forward would have to weigh, right? That they could see what the situation was and they would be able to make a decision. If it could be concealed for a future renter, I would have a much harder time voting for it based on the good cause argument. So I have no idea if that's something that the leasing or rental department would be able to enforce or if there's any possible way to do that. But, and, and not just in this case, but in, in general, that if we're going to run a background check, I'd like the renters to be able to see it.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know that we can, just based on my own experience, provide the results of an actual background check because there is often confidential and non-public data that is in a background check. That being said, I was able to find out all the things that are raised about Mr. Sutherland based upon the public access to Minnesota criminal records and the websites that's available for him.
Summary.
So it's, it's, I mean, all you have to do is just log onto it and enter the little key that they give you, those funny-looking numbers and put his name in and you get his entire history that is public. And so that's, that's accessible right here and now. Not only that, his appeal and the materials that he submitted with his appeal in this particular circumstance are now public as well.
So I think we should, so we've got a motion, we've got a second to uphold the appeal. I think we should vote.
Call the question.
I think we should just vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the, the motion, the motion passes. Counselor Manning and Counselor Wells opposed to uphold the appeal, right? Okay. Mr. Sutherland, do you have any idea how much faith we're putting in you?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very much.
Item 13, consider Resolution 16-29, amending the 2016 budget for the Joint Law Enforcement Council and consider an agreement with the Joint Law Enforcement Council. And, you want to hit the highlights of this or do you want me to, Chief Wise?
I can summarize for you sort of briefly. In, in 2011, the city council passed a resolution in support of endorsing a countywide integrated public safety information system. We now call that system a public safety data system or PSDS. What that system does is it integrates computer-aided dispatch with police field-based reporting, with law enforcement records, with jail booking, with fire department records, emergency management, and also a training. and also a training module. In all, the Joint Law Enforcement Council represents 11 law enforcement agencies. That's every law enforcement agency in Anoka County. In addition, this PSDS system supports the data management requirements for 17 fire departments in Anoka County. Where we're at with this project is the project has now come online and it's, it's a great model, one of a kind model in the nation, certainly in the state of Minnesota, of all this collaboration and cooperation. To keep this system up and running is an immense proposition. And currently, there is a system manager for this public safety data system. And the Joint Law Enforcement Council contracted with the city of Fridley to provide this system manager. That system manager is working, he's been working since July. At this time, the Joint Law Enforcement Council, in consultation with the Fire Protection Council, acknowledges that there is a need now for an assistant manager. And Coon Rapids would like to be the entity that hosts that assistant manager position, basically putting us in a similar situation as the city of Fridley. And frankly, the entities, all entities came to the agreement that it would be helpful if some of this knowledge was diffused to multiple agencies. So what's before you is that the Joint Law Enforcement Council is looking to contract or enter an agreement with the city of Coon Rapids for 32 hours of assistant system manager services. The Joint Law Enforcement Council will pay all costs for 32 hours of that work. The remaining eight hours of that work would be city of Coon Rapids' time still. And what we propose is to take an existing employee, essentially promote that person to assistant manager, 32 hours reimbursed, eight hours will be Coon Rapids PD work. And then also there's details in there that as a replacement for the position that we lose, we would like to gain a receptionist then that would work the front window of the police department. So the, the math in all this is that you see before you the resolution to enter an agreement with the JLEC to, to provide the service, but also the amendment to the city budget is to allow for us to backfill the 32 hours that basically we sell to the Joint Law Enforcement Council with a receptionist. And, and I wanted to highlight the, the cost of all this because everything has a cost, of course. And what we're talking about for 2016, the way the positions all weigh out, is that it actually would be a net budget savings for 2016 of, shoot, I lost the number, I think it was 16, $1,700. The model in 2017 would be a, a net increase in, to the city budget of $3,300. But I can tell you, as police chief here to the city of Coon Rapids, I consider it an immense benefit to us to be able to have immediate access to the person who would fill this role as assistant system manager. That person's role will primarily be to records management, law enforcement records management, which is the bulk of the data. It's sort of the, it's the warehouse of the data and it's the data in and the data out and it's, and having that person onsite is an enormous opportunity for us in Coon Rapids. And I hope you adopt this resolution, or the resolutions.
You hadn't said hello.
Spending my life in IT, I would think that that's a really handy person to have in your back pocket. So I would like to make a, a motion to authorize the agreement with Yanoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council to provide the public safety data system, assistant system manager with 80% of that position's cost covered by the, and covered to be reimbursed by the JLEC and to approve resolution 16 dash 29, amending the 2016 budget for the Joint Law Enforcement Council's system management.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Much less conflicted. Item 14 on our agenda is to consider resolution 16 dash 28, amending the 2016 facility construction budget to fund card readers and security cameras for the city center building. And this is from Sharon, you want to give us the, this is the snapshot on this?
Essentially, we would like to add two new cameras for the civic end of the building and also another camera that faces out back in our, what we call the backyard with the gazebo. And then we would like to add some more card swipes to some doors that are in the banquet room and then there's an employee entrance. These doors get propped open right now, so we feel like that kind of breaches the security. So we would like to kind of plug that pole, I guess. These were intended to be in the budget, but they were added at the end and then they got missed, so that's why we're doing it now.
Counsel Clint.
Just for the sake of citizens watching or reading this, you know, when they see amending the budget, especially not so soon in the year.
Exactly.
I think they think we're increasing the budget, but can you explain how this is going?
Well, essentially, in this case, what we would be doing is we would increase the budget for this cost out of the fund balance in the facility construction fund. That's not, we don't rely on taxes in there, so it's not like we're taxing more, but we use our funds that we've transferred from the general fund when we've had under budget or over expenditures or over revenues, that we can fund that fund. So it's not like a new tax, but it is a new expenditure than what was published in the budget.
Your Honor, Counsel Manning.
I move adoption of resolution 16 dash 28.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Clint. Other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 15 on our agenda is to consider resolution 16 dash 30, accepting the donation of a Life PAC AED and approved budget amendment for the purchase of an additional Life PAC AED. And one of these would be going, let's see, so this is actually accepting the donation of a Life PAC AED from the NHL Alumni Minnesota, and then we'd be looking at purchasing an additional one. And one would be for the Coon Rapids Ice Center and the other is for Bunker Hills Golf Clubhouse. We've got, we've got, we've got some there, we've got one there, right? And this will be an additional one?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, we do have, we actually have two in the clubhouse right now, but one is, one has been for some time now on loan. So this would just be making us whole without having a loner. Obviously, both the ice arena and the golf course have, golf course clubhouse have a lot of visitors. We want to be prepared with the tools necessary to keep them safe in the hope that we absolutely never have to use those tools, but we'll be trained and ready to do so if needed.
Counsel Demmer.
I move to approve resolution number 16 dash 30 to accept donation of a Life PAC AED from the NHL Alumni Minnesota and approved budget amendment for the purchase of an additional Life PAC AED. I think this makes a lot of sense if we're a heart, safe city.
Motion by Demmer, second by Wells. Discussion. Mr. Stemmott.
Mayor, Council, just mentioned that the AED will actually be presented this Saturday at the NHL Alumni and Guns and Hoses Hockey Event that's happening at the Coon Rapids Ice Center. They're going to present it, I think, kind of prior to the game. It'll also be a great event, I think there's going to be a lot of people there, so show up early if you plan to attend.
Any other discussion? Counsel Manning.
This will not be canceled, right?
I'm sorry?
This will not be canceled like the bonfire at night.
I haven't even had to do with it.
I don't either. I just.
It's very timely given that it's an alumni hockey game.
Something we need to work on for next year, and I know that's not your responsibility, Matt, but.
Let's wrap this one up first. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and that's done. Because I felt like we were creeping into other business already. All right, at this point, we would look at open mic. Is there anybody here for open mic? Anything, Mike? Open mic. All right, we don't ever regard reports on previous open mics. Other, other business to come for Counsel, Counsel Wells?
Your Honor, before you, you talk about all the fun snowflake events, I'm wondering if you could, you or staff, give an explanation to the letter that went to residents on Mississippi Boulevard that caused some confusion.
Sure. Mr. Himmer, you want to do that, or do you want?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you may know, Mississippi Boulevard is part of our reconstruction program this year. It's got a significant water main replacement on it. It's going to be one of a very large construction season for state aid. It's also part of the Mississippi Regional National Trail. And right now, that's just signed on the road and people meander their way down the road to utilize that as a trail. What we had sent out to residents is the notion of, with the trailhead leading down into the county park and it's sending up to the college, is the idea of restricting parking on one side of the road and converting that shoulder to an on-street trail. Then maintenance would be taken care of through snow plowing and from a more safe perspective, not having to dart in and out of parked vehicles and such. So what we did is sent out a letter saying, this is what's being considered. We, we would request your input on such. The public hearing will be had on the 16th of February. In advance of that, if you have any questions or concerns related to that, please let us know, we'll work on what your thoughts are. So we're not saying it's a done deal. We've just said, this is what we are thinking and what are your thoughts on, on such action? That's, that's the letter as summarized.
Your Honor.
Counsel Manning.
I just want a clarification of what I started talking about and it's for the people out there who were disappointed that went to the area and every, basically everything except for one room of activities was canceled. And it, it really has nothing to do with the staff in, in Coon Rapids. The Snowflake Days is run by a separate organization and I'm sure they had good reason, there was no snow on the ground for sleigh rides, probably too mushy for the hay rides. The bonfire, I'm not sure what that was all about. But I, I'm thinking that maybe next year we can tactfully get together with the organization and see if we can do something about if situations come up again so that things aren't canceled at the last minute, people running out there and being disappointed. And I guess, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to, to put the blame and, and scold anybody or anything because they do a wonderful job with the, the Snowflake Days, but it just would be nice if there was, you know, maybe some other things put in place so that we don't all of a sudden have a cancel issue at the last minute.
We're right in the middle of the first week of Snowflake Days. We've still got another week and a half left and I don't think we're going to have that same Too Warm For Events. Chief Piper.
Mayor, Council, there was a meeting up at the ice arena of, of people with the Snowflakes Association and with Ice Arena personnel. And basically, there's decisions that were made that Mr., the Counsel Member Manning is talking about was made simply on the fact that the temperatures, I don't know all the details of the meeting, but I mean, it, it was a last-minute decision, but that last-minute decision was because the weather was expected to be 40 degrees and it wasn't going to work. And so, I mean, it was, we can't control the weather.
And I, I do understand it, but I was a little confused about the bonfire. And I, the other thing I was confused about is why it said ahead of time that there would be hay rides if the sleigh rides were canceled. And so there was just a little bit of, you know, well, I, I think you understand what I'm saying, there's people that came out expecting one or the other and it was really cold enough to have a bonfire. There were people skating out on the, on the trail, which is a really neat trail, by the way. But like I say, I'm not trying to scold anybody. All I'm trying to do is just say, maybe we need to talk about it so that we can figure out a better way of doing this if things come up in the future.
Mr. Manning, or Counsel Manning, I'm sorry. So to finish on the Mississippi River Trail, if you live along Mississippi Boulevard and you've received that letter, make sure you follow the instructions and offer your opinion, because that's all the city is collecting right now, is opinions on how they should pursue it. Thank you. Other business? I had all kinds of things I thought about, but I don't write them down, so they're gone.
The snow will be off the roads at 5:00 in the morning?
A little later than that, I think.
Mr. Stemmott.
Mayor, Council, just mentioned a couple other quick things. Next Tuesday, which would normally be our work session day, is a special election here, so keep an eye for that, but then we'll be meeting Wednesday for a work session. I sent an email out earlier and I think I just got to catch up with one council member about the potential for another work session at the end of the month, so just wanted to sort of remind everybody that we'll be meeting again on Wednesday, not Tuesday.
Any other business to come for, Council?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Geisler, second by Clint to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor adjourned.